Hey, everybody. Let's see, we have a quorum. And it's 6:30 at this time. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Board of Selectmen. I ask that you all rise and join me here.
This conference will now be recorded.
I ask you rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, first order of business as usual is approval of the agenda. I have two items I would like to add under new business. To follow the four that are on there now, the first one is report of the Charter Revision Committee. And then the second one is discussion on a request I have for a permit for a protest on the 20th at Hadam Elementary School. Do I have any other changes to the amendments to the agenda?
No, but I'll make the motion approved as amended.
Thank you, Sean. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Second item is approval of the minutes of our last Board of Selectmen's meeting held on May 11, 2020. You should have received copies of the, excuse me, of the unapproved minutes. Entertain a motion for approving those, and then discussion if there are any amendments to it.
I'll make the motion approve.
All right. Any discussion on the minutes as presented?
Yes, under Higginham Center, just need a clarification. He says Friday afternoon and early Saturday morning alarms went off. It doesn't say where the alarms went off.
That should be that good catch, Sean.
I know where it is. It's the elementary school, but it just needs to be added there.
Yep, good catch. Anything else?
No, no, I think it looked pretty good.
All right, Sean, will you then amend your motion to approving the minutes as amended?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposed, carries unanimously. Next item is a selectmen's update. A few things to report tonight. Start with projects as always, and please invite the other two colleagues on the board to speak up on any of these or add any at the end. Dublin Hill Bridge, Dublin Hill Bridge finally has been completed. Yes. A couple of minor items remain. Last, I was over it last week. They still have yet to put up the Ponce de Brooks signs on both sides. They've got to come back in a couple of weeks to ensure the grass they're planting is growing. Other than that, you know, all the substantial work is complete. Bridge has been open for traffic. If you haven't been there, please go take a look. The bridge looks pretty good. I think they did a good job overall. Scoville Ho Building. As I mentioned at the last update, we selected a consulting firm to do the engineering and environmental assessment of the Scoville Ho State Garage property in the Higginham Center. We have signed a contract with them. We approached the state to get formal approval to conduct the assessments and go on the property. That's a two-step process. The first is approval from a list of conditions from Department of Transportation. I received that list last week, signed that we would abide by them, returned it. From there, it goes to the Office of Policy and Management for final approval of access. I expect we will be seeing that. I hope we will be seeing it shortly, and the assessments can get underway end of this month, probably early next month is a little more reasonable with the state process. Taraligal Water Project continues. Hookups right now, approximately 85%. 100 buildings had to be hooked up, and about 85 have been done. There are still some problems with owners we can't reach, or owners who don't want to allow it or want to keep their wells. We will work through that. There's an easement issue on one property, but in general, it's proceeding well. Paving for it is ongoing. If you've been through that area, I'm sure you've been inconvenienced by it. I believe they have their original trench work redone, and that's done. The last project update meeting, which was held last week, the contractor was announced that their source for chip seal, which they have to do on at least 154, will not have process available for them until, not process, but the materials available for them until sometime in the summer. They are proposing, if that happens, that they delay finishing the paving, leave the roads in the condition they are, basically, at least the main roads, until after the summer traffic season. I agree, the thoughts of doing construction on that road during the summer traffic is kind of scary, but we will see what develops from that. Roadwork on the town roads. Roadwork has been completed on 21 of the 23 roads that were funded by our bond issuance last year or the year before the first bond issuance. The two remaining roads, work will start on Injun Hollow within the next couple of weeks, and Christian Hill Road shortly thereafter. That'll be followed by work upon Dublin Hill Road and Lieutenant Chubel Road sometime this summer. Other new update information, the budget, the proposed budget from the Board of Finance has been posted. We've been accepting feedback on it, email feedback on it that will go to the board. The budget as proposed does show a slight $90,000 increase in the overall budget, but that will not result in a mill increase for taxpayers. Would encourage comments by email. The town hearing on it, which will be obviously a virtual hearing, will be held tomorrow night. Comment period will remain open until Thursday, when the Board of Finance convenes to finalize the budget, pass the budget, and approve, and to set the mill rate. One of our items of business tonight is to give them the authority to do that. Town Office Building, you're probably aware, has been opening in phases. We have so far opened the town clerk's office to walk-in traffic from 8:30 till 2:00. All offices remain open for appointments. Tomorrow, we start senior hours from 8:30 to 10:00 for the town clerk. The plan is, so far, everything is, seems to be going well. On the 15th, we'll open the land use office, same conditions, walk-in, 8:30 to 2:00, Tuesday, Thursday, senior hours, 8:30 to 10:00. And then finally, on the 1st of July, for some reason, people think the tax assessor and tax collector's office should be open, so we will follow with those. Again, it hasn't been a problem. To me, it appears that an awful lot of the transfer station passes and dog license renewals, which is the business of the town clerk's office this time of year, is being done by mail, because I think the longest line I saw so far was one person waiting for the person ahead of them at the town. So I continue to encourage people to complete those transactions via mail. Quick note on that, and we'll get something out formally. On some of the notices on renewal of dog licenses because of a computer glitch, and still don't know quite why it happened, the notice reverted from the one customized for Hadam to the sample in the system, which is Town of Sprague. Hopefully, people ignore that part that says make out your checks to the Town of Sprague and make them out to Hadam and send them to us. Or if not, since we didn't provide the address for the Town of Sprague, maybe we'll get those checks. We'll straighten that out. Other news to let you make you aware of, on our $6 million bond that was approved at our town meeting last August. If you're not familiar with getting a bond, it's a lot like getting a loan for your house. In this case, we had five loan or bond providers bid on interest rates for us for the 20-year bond. The lowest rate was 1.686461%, which is the, obviously, the one we chose. Our financial advisor said that was the lowest rate he has seen ever in his 20-plus years in the business, and we're lucky we were able to get something that low. So we're going through right now the closing process for that, and after that, they will start issuing the bonds. COVID-19 update. We still, latest count, 36 cases in town. Fortunately, none of them have been found in any of the assisted living facilities, because I was particularly vexing when it happens. Still, unfortunately, only one fatality. The May 20th reopenings of businesses went off without any major hitches, a couple of minor complaints, but nothing major. Sure you're aware, the governor has moved up the Phase 2 reopening from the 20th of June to the 17th. Today, they issued the state sector guidelines. Basically, restaurants can offer indoor dining at 50% of their capacity. Gyms and libraries can operate at 50% capacity. Outdoor events are limited to, the limit has been increased to 25 people. That was Executive Order 7TT. And in the same executive order, churches are allowed to have inside services, 25% of their capacity, not to exceed 100 people, or they can hold outdoor services for 150. More detail of that can be found at the state's COVID-19 website. Final note, also a public health matter. You know, until COVID hit us, the biggest public health worry we had for this year was a resurgence of triple E. Predictions are, we're going to have another bad mosquito year. They tend to run in three-year cycles. This will be the third year of the cycle. Unfortunately, COVID hasn't driven the mosquitoes out. So the Public Health District, where the private contractor is doing some treatment of storm drains in seven towns or six towns rather, the Public Health District, they'll start those in each town after the storm drains have been cleaned and had them. That'll be probably about a month from now, but as soon as that's done, they put some larva side in there to take care of the larva, the lava, larvae, excuse me. That's all I have. Anything from either of the two selectmen?
Well said. Thank you. Good update.
Okay. Kate, nothing from you?
Uh, no, EDC is not meeting until Wednesday, so nothing really new happening there.
All right, and let's move on to our next agenda. I don't see everyone in the audience. Brenda Buzzey, are you here with the Board of Ed update?
Bob, it's Jen Favelore. I'm going to fill in for Brenda. She sends her regrets she couldn't make it this evening. But I'd love to update you in her stud. The Board of Education met in May, and the first item of business was our May Cougar Pride. The superintendent and the board recognized high school students Lauren Miller and junior, I'm sorry, high school senior Lauren Miller and junior Matt Jennings for their work as student representatives to the Board of Education. Both Lauren and Matt are exemplary student athlete leaders with notable involvement and success at HK. A special note of gratitude went out to Lauren as she graduates this year, and she was our representative for two years. Additionally, the 2020 Connecticut Association of Schools recognized middle schoolers, eighth graders Natalie Holton and Ivy McNeil with the Scholar Leader Award for distinguishing themselves in scholarship and leadership in the school and in their community. For the budget, the 2020-21 budget was approved. After three months of work, two budget presentations, eight budget workshops, four joint meetings with the HK town leadership, a community input session, and two weeks of community input, open email, the board voted to adopt a 2020-21 annual gross budget of $41,887,638.40. This gross budget is $461,275.12 reduction from the 2019-2020 gross budget. With the approval of the 2021 budget, the board voted to reduce the number of student school days from 182 to 180. Updates were made to the calendar, including changing the first day of school for students to August 27, replacing six early release days into full school days, and turning two school days into full professional development days for teachers. The updated calendar can be found on our rsd17.org website under calendar. COVID effects on RSD 17 for the HK class of 2020. On June 15, HK seniors and their immediate families have been invited to the high school campus at an assigned time to be celebrated by their teachers and staff and to receive their diplomas. With updated social distancing directives from the state anticipated, school administration and class officers have rescheduled prom to August and have plans to gather as a class for a graduation celebration on August 14. RSD 17 for the fall will be receiving $45,000 in CARES Act funding, with some of those funds immediately earmarked for the purchase of safety equipment, such as PPE, personal protective equipment, for the fall. Summer school guidelines from the state were released, and they gave an indicator of measures to consider for reopening in the fall. Superintendent Hagman expects fall guidelines for reopening to be released by the governor by mid-June. For our capital improvements, for technology purchases, in order to enhance student learning using technology and in anticipation that's, to some degree, remote learning is likely in the fall, the board voted to use unspent 2019-2020 funds due to COVID-19 to add 1,074 computers to the current inventory to equip all students with a school computer for use both at school and at home. This increase in district laptops will allow teachers to hold a greater number of lives, scheduled classes remotely, mirroring in-school scheduling to enhance the learning experience. Daily instruction, whether inside the classrooms or through remote learning, depends on technology as a tool for success at every level, and this investment will equalize accessibility for all of our RSD 17 students. And additionally, the board approved purchasing the new website platform and accounting HR system that was supposed to be in the 2021 budget, to use 1920 unspent funds for that purchase to help reduce the overall 2021 gross budget. Update on the fieldhouse. The state has granted approval to begin work, and the bleachers have been removed from the fieldhouse in preparation for the floor removal and abatement. And despite starting later than the original start date, the architect still believes that there should be no problem finishing our project on time. And finally, our 2021 adopted Board of Education budget is posted on the RSD 17 website under budget information for you to get a good read.
Thank you, Jen, for that. I do want to commend the Board of Education and the staff of the Regional School District for their efforts to reduce their initial budget proposal. As I'm sure you're aware, their initial proposal, combined with the change in ratio of allocations of students, would have resulted in, and don't quote me on the number, but about 1.2, 1.3 million dollar increase in our assessment. Through their efforts, that was reduced to about $300,000, and I thank them for that deeply. It makes a huge difference to us. And then building on that, as I mentioned earlier, the Board of Finance proposed budget is such that even though there's a slight increase in the budget, the mill rate remains the same, and I commend them for their efforts. Thank you all. All right, moving on to the next item, tax refunds. Should have gotten information on, we have a request for five, excuse me, three tax refunds, two personal property refunds totaling $74.10, one motor vehicle refund for the tune of $5.42, or a grand total of $79.52. And I have a motion to approve those tax refunds as requested by the tax collector.
Yep, I can make that motion.
Thank you, Kate. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on, I'll introduce the next three resolutions, or next three items on the new business at once, and then we can deal with each separately. This was an item of business that's just a routine with the new selectmen. Selectmen is listed as a trustee on all of the town retirement accounts. For some reason, that didn't get caught in this year's transition, or actually, last year's transition, until recently. So the companies administering the, the plans have come to us and said, we need a resolution. It's strictly mechanical to take Liz's name off as the trustee for the town and put not my name back on, or my name on it. They need a resolution on each of the plans from the Board of Selectmen to make that happen. And that is what the next three items of business can address. Any questions or comments on the background?
It was straightforward when I read it.
Yeah, it's a routine matter. But anyway, let's, as I said, address them each individually. You should have a resolution concerning the Town of Hadam governmental, which is the 457B plan, who, as I said, amended to remove Liz and to put me on as the trustee. And I have a motion to approve that amendment as presented to you.
I'll make a motion that we change the 457B plan to put you as trustee.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Any further discussion? Present it. All right, all in favor of the resolution as presented signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Note, the motion carries unanimously. Continuing on, the next one I have for you is the Town of Hadam Employees Pension Plan. Again, it's the same resolution. It's substituting my name for Liz as the trustee, and I have a motion to approve the amendment as presented.
Yes, I'll make a motion for the employees' pension plan that we update to you.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Final of the three retirement plans the town has is the retirement plan for the volunteer firefighters. Again, the resolution is basically the same, changing the plan to reflect that I will be the trustee as opposed to Liz. You have a written resolution in front of you. May I have a motion to approve the resolution as written?
I'll make a motion. We approve that resolution as written.
Thank you, Sean. Any discussion on the motion? All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Again, motion passes unanimously. All right, next order of business we received, and you should have a copy in front of you of the Charter Revision Report to the Board of Selectmen dated 27 May 2020. It summarizes the changes they proposed for the charter revision. Our role is to either accept or reject this plan, and then if it's accepted, move forward to the voters. And if accepted by us, my intent was to get it on the November election ballot, because we need a significant number of voters to vote on it in order to make it pass or fail. The changes proposed deal with, most of them are mire cleanups and wording. We've gone over them. They basically agreed with the ones we asked them to look at. Changed the director title, the civil preparedness title in the, in the table of contents, the Director of Emergency Management. Moving the last sentence in Section 93A to the, up to the Section 3.4A, to better line it up with the duties of the first selectman. Deleted input on the budget development from the Long Range Capital Planning Committee, as we discussed, that's set by ordinance. And it just, if we ever want to change that, it'll just make it easier if we don't have to do a charter revision at the same time. It'd still require a town meeting. Rewriting two sections because, personnel management, because they are in conflict with the Municipal Employees' Representation Act, MERA, or Relations Act, excuse me, and again, they're recommending the wording we suggested. There was a question on using a percentage instead of a number when we were talking about changes to the budget. They were comfortable that we confirmed, that the lawyers confirmed our current language in the, in the charter is conformant with state statute, so there's no change required there in Section 9.4C1. And then finally, and this was something we had extensive discussion on as a board, dealing with the transfer of funds within an agency, just between there in lines of $1,000 or more requiring, or a finance approval. Again, our final recommendation was to just delete that requirement entirely, although there was some discussion about just raising the limit. Then raising the limit is the option the Charter Review Committee chose, raising it from 1,000 to 3,000. It's a much more workable solution than the 1,000 that's there. Finally, the last thing, and what that, one of the major things, the major thing they were asked to address, reason they were reopened, was switching to a town manager form of government. As you can see, their recommendation is no change to the charter regarding the current form of government. They felt, and I concur from my experience talking to people around town, there just is not public support for that larger change right now. Any discussion by either of the other two members of the board?
No. We need a motion to set this to a town meeting?
We do, or not to a town, but to a vote?
Yeah, that's.
All right, probably best if we have a motion that approves the recommendation and continues it on the course of business to be approved by the voters.
I'll make a motion that we send this to approve as recommended and move it on to the next step.
All right, motion is on the floor. Any further discussion?
I do have a question. Who's in charge of, and when I say who's in charge, I mean, is it the Board of Selectmen, or is it the Charter Revision Commission that's in charge of educating people about these recommended changes for when it comes time to vote? Like, do we have a public hearing? Do we just put out like, an expl, you know, like, beyond the legal notice, how do we communicate this to the town?
I think at this point, there's no formal process set for that, but yes, we do have to, we should meet, or I should meet with the Charter Revision Committee to talk about just what you said, publicizing and educating.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got the time to do it. I certainly don't want to hit the voters cold with this because I know with my reaction, if I walked in and unknowingly saw this on the ballot, I'd probably go, no, because I didn't have time to think about it. So that will be part of moving this forward.
Okay.
Good point, Kate. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the recommendation of the Charter Revision Committee and continuing the recommendations on the course for approval by the town voters signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. The motion carries unanimously. And I thought this might be a long meeting tonight. We have covered all the items in the agenda. Any final comments by any of the board members?
Do you want to go over that?
Oh, yes.
And you got to help or is the Board of Finance, the Board of Finance, to do the budget?
We got to do Board of Finance thing.
Oh, yeah, minor point. Let's start with that one. That is authorized by, as directed by a couple of the governor's executive orders. Can I have a motion to allow the Board of Finance to adopt the 2020-2021 budget?
Yes, I'll make a motion that authorize the Board of Finance to adopt the 2020-2021 budget.
Thank you, Kate. Any discussion on that motion? Again, for the audience, this is pro forma. This is required at this point effectively by law for us to do that. We are meeting that requirement. Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion to authorize the Board of Finance to adopt the 2020-2021 budget signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
You wonder why I didn't want to make that motion. It was a mouthful.
Yeah, if we were just a fiscal year '21, but no one understands that unless you work with that stuff all the time. All right, thank you, everyone. Now, finally, the protest request. You should have seen, gotten a copy of the email that I received this morning. Again, I don't, I'm not looking at it. I don't recall whether I came to my email Saturday or Sunday, but I first saw this morning when I opened my emails for a, to let us know a demonstration is being held, a protest on the 20th. to let us know a demonstration is being held, a protest on the twentieth on the grounds of H E S. They are seeking a permit uh, for that, asking if they need one. Uh, I did not have a chance today to do the necessary research to see exactly what is required. I did talk with our two troopers last week. Coincidentally, I just have a monthly meeting with them the first Thursday of every month. This came up, so they are aware of it. Uh, but we hadn't heard anything officially, so we didn't have an in-depth conversation. We just talked, we recognized it's there. I would open it at this point. I would ask, for purpose of the discussion, let's assume that is not prohibited by any ordinance or does not require any special permit. But I would like the board's thoughts on, should we grant authorization for the use of H E S and potentially the town green for a peaceful protest, assuming it's conducted in accordance with all the guidelines, COVID nineteen guidelines for the governor, and again, peaceful and lawful.
I, I have no problem for a peaceful, lawful protest. You know, it's what's made our country what it is. As long as it stays that way, as long as they can guarantee they've arranged to have, um, enough security to, to keep, uh, everyone safe there and the properties. So that, that's, that's, I think that's the real worry is, you know, safety of people and property.
I concur.
I agree. I absolutely support, um, a peaceful protest. Um, but again, safety is, is paramount. Um, and that's, and you know, just considering the parking situation, making sure there's enough parking, depending on how many people show up. Making sure people, you know, stay within the property and not, you know, maybe leak out onto one fifty-four, just knowing how fast people drive up and down that road. Um, so yes, as long as it's, as long as it's peaceful, um, and conducive to the vision that we have, um, for what we would like to see in our town. Absolutely go forward.
I just want to know that you have a reading about a lot of the small town protests and so far, most of them have seemed exactly what we want. You know, people make speeches, get their feelings out, and that's pretty much what it's been. Um, I know, uh, these five in Nyannick held, uh, one or two that were no problem and some other sunny towns. So I think it's, it's very doable.
Okay, for what I have seen actually across the country, particularly anything held during daylight hours tends to be just what you want. Peaceful, like they may block some roads, which would not be acceptable here because of the road, but peaceful, lawful protests, and I support everyone's right to protest. As Sean touched on it, our country was founded by a bunch of people conducting a protest. So I'm fine with that. Uh, I will, like I said, have some more in-depth discussion with our resident troopers and check ordinances, permits, see if there are any special requirements. I don't, if nothing in that precludes having it, I will go ahead and grant it if concerns come up during that. Uh, perhaps we can reconvene a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to discuss. And if there's absolute prohibition, I will just let you know that's the results of what I found and get back to the organizers accordingly. Is that course of action acceptable?
That, that sounds good.
Yes.
Okay. All right, perhaps it was wishful thinking a few minutes ago, but I think now we're at the end of the agenda. Anything I missed this time? I got one thumbs up there on the screen.
I think we're good.
Sounds good to me. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
It's your turn, Kate.
Motion to adjourn.
You know, it's the one approved. All in favor, say aye.
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 No one's opposed on that one. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you in the audience for those of you who participated. Jen, thank you for the Board of Education update. Good night, everyone. Stay safe.
Stay well.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.